Good afternoon. Thank you all for being with us for our county commission briefing meeting. Appreciate everyone taking time to be with us today. Call the meeting to order. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the agenda or any additional items that you would want to talk about at our briefing meeting this afternoon? All right, then we will follow the agenda as published. And the first item is an update on the Ferry Road Solicitation. And Tim Love and Sarah Odeo are here to help us out with this. Thanks for being with us.
Awesome. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm going to be brief. I'm just going to introduce Sarah, who's going to walk us through the Ferry Road Development Solicitation. That's all.
All right. For anyone here who doesn't know, I'm Sarah Odeo. I'm with the Development Finance Initiative at UNC Chapel Hill School of Government. And I'm back with the same thing from last time, except you've had a little bit more time at this point to review the solicitation draft. So what is happening is if you all are happy with the draft, we will release next Monday. I'm going to add some more pictures. I was telling Tim, we need more like, wow, look how beautiful this place is photos. But other than that, releasing on Monday with the goal of having proposals back by Friday, August 9th. This document is going to focus in on the private development portion of Ferry Road. So that District One Public Conservation Area, those 70-plus acres of conserved area and greenways, that is separate, that will not be accounted for in the solicitation, that will be done through a county process. What we are out there for is to find a master development partner who will carry the multifamily, the low-to-medium-density homeownership options, as well as the central community area. This document that you all have seen, I feel like there are questions, and you can jump in at any time because today's about feedback. So this document establishes the county's requirements and your preferences for private development. So what must absolutely happen with the private development? And what would you like to see happen? But hey, we're not going to make financial commitments for that at this moment. It is consistent with the conditional zoning that has already been passed to the city of Asheville, including but not limited to the housing development conservation requirements and voucher acceptance, which is also critically consistent with your affordable housing services program, which is you must accept the vouchers. This document describes the potential public-private partnership, which for benefit must be of households earning less than 80% of the area median income. It describes the land commitment, the subsidies, the shared infrastructure costs, and the greenway system, which, as I said, is outside the private, but it's important to note because it is a big part of this. So off the bat, the selection criteria. So what are, what is this document requiring of developers? How are you going to judge master development partners? And a successful proposal will demonstrate alignment with the guiding public interest, which you all have seen many times, but we want to see concerted effort to align with those. The qualifications and the experience of the master development partner and their partners. What's key here is that there is either going to be one partner who does it all, but more likely, one big master development partner, and then additional individual partners for things like the low-income housing tax credit development, the market rate multifamily, the homeownership. And so we want to know about who the master development partner is and who their likely partners are going to be. If they have previously done a public-private partnership of any kind, we want those positive references from other local governments. Because what you're doing here, and I really want to emphasize this, is you're looking for a partner. And I keep using the word, but I want to be clear that this is somebody that you are going to be really going back and forth with for a long time. And so you're choosing somebody that you want to work with and you want to see execute this project for the county. They have to show in their proposal that they can deliver the envisioned unified mixed-income community. And that's key here. We don't want to see gates around market rate and gates around light tech and gates around the homeownership. This has to be the Ferry Road community, single branding, single place. They have to show that they can do it within a reasonable timeline. If they're like, yeah, we could do it in 10 years' time, maybe not. They have to include assumptions that reflect the market. So if we're going to look at it as DFI, we're going to help you all assess these proposals. And one thing we look at is, are these rents consistent with where rents are going? Are they being too ambitious? Are they being too conservative and asking for more or less than they need? And they have to adhere to the MWBE requirements of North Carolina's Minority Business Participation Goals and Buncombe County's procurement policy. So what is preferred but not required? We find that it'll come down to these preferences. You'll probably, we hope, that you'll have a couple or more options that meet all the requirements. And where they're really going to demonstrate their merit is going to be on these preferences. And so these include incorporation of proven alternative construction methods, and this is focused on cost specifically. Can you reduce the cost by using a method that they've, you've shown elsewhere that works, that will be sustainable, maintain quality, but that can lower the investment needed potentially? Use of green-built construction methods, and you'll see in the document, we outline what that means. Experience with or identification of a potential partner who has experience implementing an approach, so many words, but who has experience making sure that a homeownership, which is challenging, that it remains affordable for multiple homeowners over the years. And identification of a stormwater strategy across the entire development that is consistent with your 2043 comp plan. The timeline for this, as I said earlier, releasing next week with an August 9th deadline. After that, we will take some time to help you all pick a partner. And the way that we'll do that is we're going to take the responses and we're going to try to pull out all the extra, the fluff potentially, and focus in on what you all have stated is important to you, and assess that and let you look at it kind of in a more apples-to-apples way. And in that time, there may be interviews of the top partners, there may not be interviews. There might be one clear partner, there may be three great options, and you'll want to spend more time getting to know them. After that, you pick a partner, and you're going to get into the negotiation for this preliminary agreement, which is the memorandum of understanding. This is technically non-binding, but we are asking the developer to put some funds in escrow, they're putting something at risk while you all, in good faith, negotiate a development agreement. Once that MOU is in place, the developer will start spending money, and so will you all. And by spending money, I mean taking the time, the resources for, on their side, identifying additional, more detailed plans, refining everything, finding their investment and debt partners. And on your side, making sure that anything that you need to get done or identify will get done in that period of time before they break ground in the following year. So that's a summary of what's in that document. Any questions or feedback? Anything that you wanted to see that wasn't in there?
I won't speak to the last part. I don't know what all should be going in here, but it seems like a promising plan. Can I ask, just since last time, we kind of talked about how many or how few people might make bids. We don't really know. This is kind of a novel process. If we get to kind of the agreement stage, we're talking about where this goes, and someone is having some economic trouble and that partner backs out for whatever reason, construction companies back out, what, what does that look like for contingency? Would we just go with the second most competitive bid, or would we reopen?
You could. You could do that. You could also reopen. I think it's a decision that you'll come to then. Right? So we'll, we'll cross that road when we get to it. And hopefully, you don't have to get to it.
Thank you.
Looks good to me. Thank you.
You know, there's been a lot of ideas for the use of this property over the years. At one point, it was considered for a potential site for a firing range. So do you think that that might still fit in with the overall mix of uses?
Um, I mean, no.
All right, just checking. It is, all right. Just trying to be creative here, right? You know, how much can we fit in here, right? So, okay. All right. Looks great. Any other questions or comments for now? So thanks for helping get us to here. We look forward to hopefully getting some great folks to the table who recognize what a, what a great project this is and engaging with them to select the one that's the best fit.
Yeah. And once it's out, just if people are reaching out to you, just send them my way or send them to Tim, and we'll make sure that we see it through. All right.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Thank you, Sarah. Okay. The next item is a discussion on the opioid settlement funding. And we've got a presentation from Victoria here. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you for having me, Victoria Reichert. I'm the Behavioral Health Manager. And as you started, we're going to just do a review of opioid settlement funds. My intent is to, one, provide you all some updates on what we've accomplished so far in fiscal year '24. Also, to share a little more detailed information around our proposed budget ahead of the entire budget coming forward to you all. And then also to meet the requirement of the memorandum of agreement on holding an annual public meeting. We and Avril have updated or invited our municipal leaders to listen in, to ask questions, to reach out with any feedback afterwards. So kind of hitting it all at once. We may not continue to do this type of public meeting in this way in the future years, maybe when we're really looking at new opportunities and different things to fund. We will kind of do more what we maybe did last year, really invite people to come and have conversations. But as you'll see, since we are mostly sustaining what we have funded, we felt like this could be a good use of our time and to provide you all some updates. And I just want to do a little level set for people who are listening in and may not be aware. But back in 2021, there was a national opioid settlement with various companies that were selling opioids or a part of that infrastructure that was making billions of dollars. And since that update, there's been additional settlements. So nationally, we're around $50 billion coming to the states to abate the effects of the opioid epidemic. We are close to $1.4 billion in North Carolina. And that brings Buncombe County to expect about $29 million through 2038. So we're averaging about $2 million a year up until 2027, and then that continues to reduce through 2038. And the purpose of these funds are to support programs or services that serve persons with opioid use disorder or any co-occurring substance use disorder or mental health condition. And so as we learned about these funds and starting to plan for those, we wanted to do a deeper dive into the community and getting feedback. And so we had a team of folks from various partners listed on this slide to do some of these tasks. And so with that work of various groups, we really were able to dive into and identify some of our strengths, things that are working well, but also what are those gaps? And where are opportunities that we can further enhance our response? And yet, some of those challenges that we're facing. And with this information, we identified some recommendations on what we would utilize our settlement funds through fiscal year '26. So our current plan was for fiscal year '24 to '26. As, as a county, as we continue our strategic planning process, this will continue to be woven through the process and understanding how, as a county, we can respond to the opioid epidemic. So getting into a little background of just a reminder of what we funded in fiscal year '24. So this was approximately 21 positions, contracts, not all county positions, but several contracts as well, around collaborative strategic planning. So this was some work being done to really understand further steps we need to take to enhance our work. We were able to contract with the medical substance use professional, Dr. Shukun Shukula, who you all have met, and he's really helped guide us through a medical lens on some best practices and exploring opportunities, again, to enhance our services. We continued to find our harm reduction program manager within public health. We've also supported our community reentry team. We created some, set aside funds for social determinants of health. We expanded our community paramedics and continued to support the peer supports and the licensed clinicians. And then we were able to expand our naloxone distribution, as well as our materials and messaging out to the community. And then we also hired an inclusive connection and healing coordinator to really help address the inequities in our community, the marginalized communities that have not been reached and that we are seeing an increase in overdoses. And so just to provide some highlights, I'm sure I could spend a lot of time here sharing in more depth, but just to give you all a sense of what has been happening in this past year. The work of our fatal overdose response team within the county has been able to make progress towards identifying what data our programs are collecting, not collecting, and where this information is in store, is being stored. And we are in the process of creating dashboards for individual programs to help inform decision-making. And we'll continue to explore ways to cross-share information while maintaining the privacy and confidentiality requirements. Departments have been coming together regularly and identifying ways to better connect individuals to resources. And just ultimately, how we work together, understanding those services, how we can enhance those connections, has been very powerful when you have the people that are doing the work in the room and making those connections. We're also been creating tools and processes to continue this collaboration, evaluate programs, and plan for sustainability. And along with this work has been developing our public messaging campaigns that are culturally aligned and working with community partners to create access to services in historically marginalized communities. And again, our inclusive connection and healing coordinator, they started in January, and I'll talk a little bit more about some of that work. But we'll continue to support this work and hearing from our communities and helping make those services more accessible and hosting outreach events. We are also excited to see ongoing movement towards alternative response to behavioral health needs in our community by partnering with law enforcement and mental health. This gives a snapshot of some of the reach our Hope and Healing campaign has done in the past year. Tapping into a variety of social media platforms has helped spread the word of potential risks and the supports available in our community. In March, we held our first community conversations, opioids in the Black community, that had over 100 attendees, and where additional connections were made with Black providers in our community. A Cape, along with Dr. Shukun Shukula, our medical substance use professional, was able to put together a recording about opioids in English and in Spanish. And as of a week ago, we have reached over 2,000 in English and over 150 on our Spanish Facebook page. And so we're going to continue our messaging through social media, events, and planning for additional community conversations. With our recovery support services, these funds allowed our community paramedics to expand, distribute their teams geographically. This has helped to improve our responses to overdoses and to provide ongoing outreach to individuals that are unhoused or as folks are entering or leaving the detention center. In '23, the community paramedics have responded to 986 overdose calls and provided 153 inductions onto medications. And of those individuals, 108 were successfully transferred to an ongoing medication provider. And we have seen those that are engaged with a treatment provider, 70% have remained in treatment. The support from the mental health clinicians provide folks the opportunity to access higher levels of care. So we've seen an increase in folks being able to get into aid act by really bridging that gap and making sure people are able to get in as timely as possible as beds are available. Our peer supports have been instrumental in helping folks access care and get connected to the resources they need for their health and well-being. And this just shows some of those resources that have been connected, housing, getting employment, getting into those detox rehab, getting onto Medicaid, all of those types of supports that really help the outcomes of our individuals. And it's exciting to share that our port team, they have had seven participants that they have worked with since they started that are now peer support. So they have sustained their recovery, they have engaged in a training on how they can continue to help others. And that's the hope, right? Is that we're able to help people find their recovery, that they are then able to continue and give back and help others find their journey as well. And for community reentry services, so this service helps folks that are leaving the detention center and accessing, again, those services and supports they need for their health and well-being with the ultimate goal of reducing recidivism. And so far, 225 individuals have been served, with 75% being Caucasian and 21% Black, African-American. A part of these settlement funds that I mentioned earlier was setting aside social determinants of health funds. And so you can see that we have been able to address several needs within the population. If you all recall, Justice Services several months ago had provided some analysis around individuals who had received housing support and a cell phone, and there was a reduction in that recidivism. So with opioid settlement funds, we have been able to sustain some of that work and increase that work in getting people into a safe place where they have those supports as they're continuing their recovery, as well as addressing any of their other needs. And so this group, as I mentioned, saw a reduction in recidivism, and we are seeing a good, a significant number of participants within community reentry services not experiencing rearrest within the same time period. And then naloxone distribution. So again, with the additional support of opioid settlement funds, we have seen a 345% increase of naloxone distribution compared to the number of average kits being distributed prior to fiscal year '23, quarter three. So we had started funding naloxone in fiscal year '23, close to the end, have continued that. And we, this has allowed us to partner with organizations such as UNATE, Operation Gateway, PORT, AMoja, Local Shelters and Congregation, to increase that secondary community distribution to historically marginalized communities. Funds have also supported increase in training and outreach. Is there a question? Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. What percent increase did you say?
A 345% increase.
Of distribution of?
Of naloxone. So based on all the funds that we had available, that was primarily in our harm reduction program, this has expanded our ability to continue to, to provide that supplies to our community members.
So it's a dramatic growth of the availability of the, of the drug. Okay.
Yeah. Yep. And I think just that reach of who all is being connected with this resource and understanding you do not have to have a substance use disorder to have an overdose. And I think that's the message that we're really trying to send to folks, is that it might be folks that are recreationally using drugs, going to a show, taking something and knowing that there is a greater risk for an overdose. And having naloxone readily accessible will save lives. And so continuing to do those outreach efforts, Public Health continues to support a monthly drop-in style training at the Health and Human Services Building on the first Friday of each month from 11:30 to 1:00 PM in the main floor conference. And our harm reduction provider has also been able to increase an array of syringe disposal options in the community, around bathrooms, different kiosks around the parks, as well as working with City of Asheville and transportation sites. So this has increased our capacity to, again, partner with different folks and to ensure that we can keep our community safe. And so looking ahead, I'm going to talk about the 2025 allocations, what we are looking at for today, what that might look like in future years, as well as what we are planning to continue to focus on, on fiscal year '25. So again, if you all have any questions or any feedback at the end. And we're also inviting our local municipalities in our community to also reach out if they have any questions or would like to learn more. And what you'll see in this budget here is largely the same services and positions that we have funded in fiscal year '24. The couple asterisks are some changes happening. Our medical substance use professional, Dr. Shukula, has made some great strides in helping develop our infrastructure and identifying some best practices. But that need is starting to reduce. We're going to need some ongoing technical assistance as we continue to implement processes, getting that expertise. But we're also exploring, how can we address some of our individuals that are getting services from our post-overdose response team and getting low-barrier access to medications for opioid use disorder? So we have worked on a potential pilot where we'll use telehealth to get a prescriber in front of individuals that have no insurance and do not have the resources to make it to some of our local treatment providers based on some of their requirements that they have that are not pairing well with some of our individuals with low resources or the ability to make certain appointments. And so the hope with this is we will see how this will increase the capacity of our community paramedics by folks being able to get a prescription for medications and not needing daily dosing, and then share that with our treatment providers to see how they can continue to expand low-barrier access for our most vulnerable population. We've also put some additional funds for our licensed clinicians and peer supports. As we've increased the number of community paramedics, we want to make sure that we're able to continue to provide that wraparound support, which really helps support the success of people getting the resources that they need, continuing with the treatment, and having those licensed clinicians to respond, provide counseling, and help them access higher levels of care. And then under our naloxone distribution and medical supplies, this is more of a sustainment of work that our public health had previously been doing outside of opioid settlement funds that since it's aligned, that we went ahead and absorbed that within the opioid settlement funds for this fiscal year. And I do want to note, these amounts are considering the potential COLA amount. So it's already including what COLA could look like for this fiscal year. And just to forecast or to kind of illustrate what we might see, if we continue to support all of these services that we have right now in the next several years, as we're currently funding and considering some increases over the years, it will be in fiscal year '27 that we will be in a deficit, that we will not have enough funds. And that's also the year that we will want to take a look and see, are our priorities still the same? Are there changes that we need to make? And again, this next year, we will be diving in deeper on how we are working on our coordinated budgets and really planning strategically. But I wanted to just give you that picture, and that, there have been some questions about maybe why have we not budgeted for the full amount of what we received that year? And this is a major component, is by being able to carry over our balance, we're able to extend the length of time that we're able to provide our services that we are currently And so our, some of our strategic priorities is being able to reduce that substance use and related harm and enhancing our infrastructure to support the coordination. So we're working on developing a group that we expect to be launching in July 2024, similar to what we have had, but really focusing on our folks on the ground, working together, identifying those needs in real time, and having our leaders together to be able to hear that feedback and be able to plan accordingly, but in a more coordinated, cohesive fashion, as well as continuing to look at data and trends and use that to help inform our responses and continue to explore areas to improve and to enhance the services we're providing. And we will continue to focus on life-saving efforts for those most at risk today. As I mentioned, exploring telehealth, how do we create low-barrier options to increase the capacity of our community paramedics, as well as an emphasis on our equity and culturally competent treatment options. And one thing I wanted to bring up, as I showed those recommendations earlier on the slide, there were several that we have not touched on. And we have talked about, one, staying, maintaining our focus on life-saving measures today. But I wanted to highlight, what's exciting is that it's not that there's not work happening in these other areas. There is work happening and continuing to happen around early intervention. There are community efforts around coordinating with various youth councils in order to support our youth voice and leadership skills, exploring opportunities to address suicide prevention and education. We continue to support the Partnership for Substance-Free Youth and the programming they are providing to schools and youth-serving groups. Around employment-related services, there have been community efforts around education and expansion of recovery-friendly workplaces. To learn more... To learn more, please visit recoveryfriendlync.com. Also around recovery housing, we have submitted a grant, I came to you all last month, which we should be hearing any day now, if we have been awarded that grant, to support the expansion of ABCCM's Transformation Village. There's also community efforts through the Recovery Community Collaborative and support from the Lighthouse Foundation to create a live app where providers can list current bed availability and seekers can search by criterion availability. If you're interested in learning more, visit recoveryhomefinder.com or search in the Apple or Google store. So excited to see that while we are not putting opioid settlement funds to these efforts, it continues to be on our forefront and continuing to look at opportunities to make progress in these areas. And I just want to invite for you all, if you have any questions or feedback, anything that maybe excites you, maybe if there's something that you thought you would have seen and you did not see. But we also invite our local municipalities to reach out if they have any questions, any feedback, anything that they would like to see or know more about. And also, we have our opioid settlement public input page, which we will be updating shortly in the next several days, and we'll continue to use that space. So I want to open it up if you all have any questions or feedback.
Thank you, Victoria. I have a question. If you can elaborate on a few of these position programs, if you can elaborate on what's being done with the Behavioral Health and Justice Analyst position, the Social Determinants of Health Funds, and then I think you said you were also going to elaborate on the Inclusive Connection and Healing Coordinator position.
Yes. So our Behavioral Health and Justice Analyst, they sit in Strategy and Innovation, and they have been really helping facilitate a lot of this work, kind of being our project manager, keeping things on task, and also working with our medical substance use professional and the departments around that data collection. So that has been, what that role has been working on, as well as myself, has been kind of creating that infrastructure, that planning, getting feedback from folks. And so that work would continue to happen. As you know, they're actually helping facilitate our, with our strategic plan this year and making sure that we're keeping in mind the substance use and those needs on how we respond. The Social Determinants of Health Funds, so this was something that when we were doing that feedback around with our community and with our treatment providers or service providers within the county, a lot of folks just had those barriers, right? It's when you, I can get on those medications, I was able to see that provider, but I have no money to get those medications now. So now our community paramedics can help provide that bridge, get that prescription, our community reentry team, as well as helping to get into a recovery house. So a lot of times, after you've left the detention center, right, you have no money, you have no income, and you're trying to get things figured out and where to live. And so a lot of times, our reentry team will help, will use these funds to help get that person's entry fee covered, or a couple of weeks covered, so as they get connected with more resources and get employment that they can continue. There's even for, in social services, so we have some families that, they are working on reunification, and they have a vehicle, and they're getting to their intensive outpatient treatment, which can be three to four days a week for several hours, and their vehicle has broken down. And so some of these funds have been able to help repair that vehicle, that minimal needs, to get them to continue towards their treatment and to be able to continue to visit their children and create that relationship. So those are just some examples. Each of our departments are able to access these funds, and we're also asking them to then evaluate, did these funds make the impact that we intended on this person's life? Was this able to increase the outcomes? And that's the hope, is to really understand that when we address some of these basic barriers that sometimes we can all take advantage, or take granted for, are we seeing that impact? And are we getting better outcomes? And then your last question about the Inclusive Connection and Healing Coordinator. This person is really intended to be out in the community and connecting with various partners, community members, helping us create those community conversations. So our next hope, plan is to do this with our Hispanic population, really identifying who are some key stakeholders, who can we leverage to share and make those connections with those communities, as well as working with some of our trusted partners. We have been exploring an inclusive healing place in our local church in a marginalized community. We have submitted a grant for Dogwood Health Trust for this, so we are also waiting for what that will look like. But this position would help support that work, be that liaison, being connected with folks that may not traditionally have accessed county services, and being able to get that feedback, but also creating that safe place to talk about maybe the harms, the fears, the stigmas, and helping to increase that access. So just some, I feel like that position's continue, will continue to be developed as we get in there and really identify what those needs, but those are just some highlights.
I guess this is more of an abstract idea than a real question, because you gave us a lot of really helpful information there. Is there any way for us to kind of get, maybe not quarterly, but pseudo-real-time access to what social determinants of health funds are going to, so we can have a good read on what's happening in our community and how we need to be responding to these problems real time? Because I imagine if we're dealing with multiple substances, we're going to have different strategies, and there are going to be different things happening, not just for Buncombe County staff, but our partners and the Sheriff's Office, people in the community, and just being aware of all those things, so we're conveying that information to all the people who need to know.
And just to be clear, like, understanding what are the main topics that the Social Determinants of Health Funds are going for? Like, is it a majority for housing? Is it a majority for medications? And so using that information to understand, okay, here's the gap, this is the need in our community, and how much funds are being used?
That would be my thought, just, and it can come with recommendations as well, but I'd be really curious just to make sure that we're remaining nimble in how we respond to these kind of perpetually changing substance use issues.
And that's, I think, the intent even with those funds, is trying to leave it very, very broad and allowing our staff that are working with those clients directly to really understand what the needs are. And so I hope that we will kind of learn where, what are the highest impact needs, so as funds may not be as readily available, that we at least are prioritizing those funds for interventions that will make the greatest impact. Anything else? All right. Thank you all.
Okay. Next item is the presentation on the Asheville Primary School feasibility study. And Robert Brown's here to help us out with that.
Commissioner Ty, thank you for allowing me to give you a brief update on the progress we've made for the Asheville Primary School site feasibility study with associated reviews of Hall Fletcher and Montford North Academy. I need to recognize the team that's really leading the progress that we're making, and that is ADW Architects. I have, we have participating both principals in the firm, Keith Carline and Rob Woodruff. Keith is here in support, just in case there are questions in which I can't respond to with regard to the process and the backup data and things of that nature at this point. So leadership indicated priorities. When I say leadership, that is the Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County. Some similarities, some differences. For Asheville City Schools, the Operations Center, it would support maintenance, transportation, and food services. That's their number one priority. Second priority was a pre-daycare facility, and the third was a alternative school option or an opportunity to review that in terms of either a new facility or a reuse of an existing facility. So that was with the Asheville City Schools, Buncombe County. First priority was pre-k daycare facility, an EMS base, and then the third priority was introduced as a library. So Asheville City Schools, those priorities came while Dr. Causey was in place. They were revisited with the new superintendent at the time, Dr. Furman, and her board to confirm that those were still the priorities, and it was concluded that they were before we began the process. So the first location, and the primary location is the Asheville Primary School, it's on 441 Haywood Road. It looks big, but it's only 4.77 acres. So that tells you a lot, when you have six priorities and you have 4.77 acres, you have to kind of expand what your review might be for the ability to meet the needs. Back half of the property is zoned institutional, the front half is H1 core. What does that mean? The back side is a little easier, the front side is a little more difficult, a lot more specifics on it required for zoning purposes. Now, what you see off of Haywood Road in this, in this image, is forecasting some of the DOT changes that will occur as you enter into that intersection. You see an island separation, it will be a right-in, right-out-only consideration off of Haywood Road at the, what would be the front side, and it will no longer have an ability to go out of the site into the ramp and down to the highway. Now, we've gone through, with user groups, the different groups for both Buncombe County and Nashville City Schools, we've, we've been in meetings since November of '23, so we've had numerous reviews and meetings. But what we've resolved at, at least at this point, as the kind of number one option for this site, houses in that rear quadrant, houses.
Sorry, sorry, Robert. I want to interrupt you prior to this next map here, if that's okay. In the aerial image, there's a gray line, kind of a halfway transparent gray line running east and west, parallel to the I-240 ramp, that looks like some sort of DOT proposed improvement. I'm just wondering what that is.
Right. That's a, that is DOT. Oops. There. The gray line, the, it's parallel to the ramp?
Yeah.
I'll call it a greenway.
Okay.
But it's a pedestrian way, and it allows you to get from the front to the back, and yes, that is part of the Department of Transportation's planning, not ours.
And I know you're not with DOT, so.
Give the shot.
Tell me, tell me you don't know, but my understanding is, obviously, there's proposed right-of-way widening in here. Last time I checked, they weren't sure exactly where that right-of-way would end up. That is to say, DOT is not 100% sure where on the earth that right-of-way will be drawn and delineated.
I think that's an accurate statement. What I've shown represents the most current documents they have currently, that they are working from. But yes, they have a while before they go to a conclusive state of their work, so that could fluctuate. I really do not think that it will encroach more, because at this point, it gives them what they need to do the upgrades, as I, as I have reviewed it and as I understand it. I mean, just relative to the amount of information we have at this time. Yes, sir.
Last question on that topic. My understanding is, or I guess I don't have an understanding of, wherever that right-of-way ends up being and expanded, it's not clear to me if everything within it would need to be leveled. That is to say, every structure, every tree, everything that ends up within that boundary of right-of-way will be taken down. You know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
There's a row of trees there, comes to mind, there's a few other things in that area that come to mind.
Meaning a buffer zone, right?
Yeah, like, just because DOT has it in there right-of-way, does that mean they knock it over, is my, is my question?
Okay. This is common experience that I've had, not, not expertise. My common experience is, is that in their right-of-way, they clear the zone.
Yeah.
They go back and they vegetate in a way that is supportive of what the infrastructure, you know, you'll notice it bridges, right, stabilize the earth. You see a lot of landscaping, holding the earth in, it also is a beautification. But before that bridge is built from side to side, every tree that you see, you see on I-26, the little bridge work they're doing now, how that entire bank all the way up is cleared. So, so I think is a standard, and I'm not saying this as expert, that they do clear from side to side and then restore as it would be through their ultimate design. Now, does that mean that that ultimate design includes some forestry or things of the nature that are there that they want to include? It could be. I don't, but again, I'm not DOT.
I hear you. Thank you. Thank you.
Is it okay for me to go forward?
Please.
All right, thank you. So in the, in the study of the, of the groups and of all the priorities, the three that remained on the Asheville City Primary School site is the Operations Center. Obviously, in the back portion of that, because that gives you some flexibility, allows you to have buses and their maintenance and the flow of their traffic away from the pedestrian areas up forward. We have the second and third facilities there would be an EMS station and a library. The EMS station has the ability to be a three-bay station, a five-bay regional station, and if ever needed or thought to be needed, it could even be enhanced with an additional story, given it other opportunities. The library, due to zoning, it is a two-story facility. It would focus outward, but its entry would be inward, where you see the majority of parking there. Throughout the entire site, you would have a weave of brick and fencing, or ornamental fencing, to separate the different zones and give it kind of a security from one area to the other. We also see that the Argyle Lane, we will own, own the property itself, it will, a new lane will be constructed, giving two flow paths and retaining a parking path for the residents in the neighborhood. Right now, you have a flow path and a parking path, and you kind of have to pull over if somebody's coming your way. So that's to give a safe, you know, passage from front to back, even though the majority of what would occur on the site actually occurs at the top quarter in lieu of the back half. So this is, this is sort of the image of it. Also, you'll see that in that section, they've been able to kind of work out the grading so that if the current site goes a way and steps down about 15 feet, then it goes way in and steps another 10 feet. And this, this design opportunity, it actually levels it out down or at an equal slope across the entire site. Thus, it's a lot more usable for pedestrian movement. Hall Fletcher Elementary Schools.
Sorry, Robert.
Yes, sir.
Keep interrupting you. Is Argyle Lane, is that a city right-of-way? City road?
Yes, sir.
And you're saying you're, in this proposal, in this image, you're talking about widening the travel way?
That's on, on to the, our property, or on the primary school property. That is not, that is not, so you're allowed to increase a road width with approval, as long as you are giving the property.
Okay, I see.
To do that. We are not taking away from the residential side, it's giving property for safe haven.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And usually, that would be a well-received.
Yeah. That seems like a must in terms of design. I guess I just have one more piece of feedback, and I'll look to Brownie, because I don't know who else to give it to, but something that gives me concern or heartburn on this image, and I know this is just a draft plan, but is seeing a proposal for, you know, leveling an old building that we probably need to, but building a new facility on Haywood Road in one of the most urban areas of Buncombe County, to just like store things for the school and the maintenance facility, just doesn't seem like the highest and best use of the property to me.
Let's, let's come back to that. Let's keep going through the presentations.
Right. Very.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Robert.
Okay. So, we'll, uh, we'll leave the primary school, uh, site. And I said to accomplish, uh, the other priorities, uh, Dr. Furman, um, and, and s- school board offered opportunities at Hall Fletcher. So, Hall Fletcher is sixty Ridge Long Road. It's about eleven point nine five acres. You can see it in this image with the cyan line across it. And then also the little gravel parking, kind of gravel dirt parking space in front of the facility you see noted as O two seven eight. That is also their property. So, they've come, they've gone through and looked at a couple of concepts. The primary concept of the, the main, main reason for the study is to, to address a P, a pre-K facility. That pre-K facility would be jointly, um, it would be for the county and for the city schools. It, it would be approximately twenty-four thousand five hundred to twenty-nine thousand square feet. We'd had our final critique review yesterday. That's how we're into the process. And, and that, the lower end number is what you see on my screen, but the probability is, is closer to, to twenty-nine thousand. It separates the parking for, uh, kindergarten. Uh, kindergarten children, uh, they actually park and are escorted in by their guardian into the building. So, it's not just a dr- a drive around and drop-off. So, you have to have a parking. It segregates it from the rest of the, of the drive-in and dri- at drop-off. It's at the, um, elementary school portion and the kindergarten portion. It also allows for you to have individual play areas. Play areas as it would be for the pre-K. They would be contiguous to the building at seventy-five square feet per student, giving enough area for that. Also maintaining all the play space that exists currently to be able to have neighborhood soccer, also to be able to support the kindergarten and the elementary school play area. So, all of those spaces are being maintained in this. And we're not constructing onto the building, thus giving a pretty, pretty good savings because the site drops from the top where the existing school is down to where this building would be considered is about a twenty-foot drop. So, it nestles down below while the rest of the school is, is, is above. There's a second, do you have a question, sir?
I think maybe Al does.
I do.
Uh, I, I do too, but I'll, I'll go first.
How many additional pre-K classrooms will we get?
Can you help on that? Rob, Rob, would you, let me just answer straight forward. I don't know your answer.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I will say it this way. It meets the, it meets the scoping needs from Buncombe County's desire and from the Asheville City Schools. That's what developed the amount of square footage that we're showing here. I will make sure you have that answer.
Please, yeah.
Yes, sir. I apologize.
I'm on the pre-K committee and that's critical.
Yes, sir. I apologize for not having that answer.
I, I believe it was in the upper twenties, close to, close to thirty, but, but I think it'd be wise for us to double check.
Yeah, do. Because to me, I'd hate to see us spend the money that we're going to spend to do that and we not have enough classrooms because we already are way behind with pre-K classrooms.
Yes, sir.
And, and Robert, I just wanted to ask, uh, some of the, the fine print on these, uh, on these buildings here, I, I can't quite read. So, I just want to clarify and make sure I understood. I heard you right. We're proposing a joint city schools, Buncombe County facility. I guess what do you mean by that? Like, in the sense that?
Well, um, the priorities that were given to us.
Okay.
Um, priorities for Buncombe County and priorities for Asheville City Schools.
Okay.
It was a pre-K building.
Okay.
So, we're not going to build a, a pre-K simply to serve Buncombe County's needs and Nashville City Schools. In lieu, we're going to build one building that serves both needs. That's capacity that it requires.
Okay.
Um, upwards of twenty-nine thousand square feet is assumed at this time.
And what, what is contemplated on this map is, um, uh, nothing will happen to the Hall Fletcher Elementary School building.
That's correct.
It's all, it's all just the, the property around it?
The, the, the surroundings place support.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, that's kind of a key to that is to allow that operation to continue to be in operation safely while the other is constructed at that lower section. Now, next stage of opportunity, and this does not mean that it is something, it's to be determined, meaning by leadership, is you have the ability, because the way the site works, that you could actually put a second story onto that facility for kindergarten or elementary school or other needs by the school system, um, of approximately thirty-two thousand square feet. So, you could have fifty-six thousand five hundred to sixty-one thousand square foot of facility there. Kindergarten, I mean, the pre-K has to be at grade level. It is allowed to be on both levels.
Yeah, it can be.
That would have to be a different, different use. And I'm just, as part of the study, we've explored different things to understand the full realm of what you might be able to do in this case because the site is the way it is. One story gets you kind of to that next level. And if you wanted to, you could build another story that does get you at that level. So, you could enter in in both directions at both levels. Okay, if I go on to the next? All right, all right. So, the last thing is Montford North Star Academy at ninety Montford Avenue. It's an existing building of, of approximately fifty-eight thousand square feet. In our early studies, we looked at this site at, at doing an alternative school as a build-on. Right? What could we build on this site? Keep that North Star Academy operating as it is. It didn't work. Too, too much area, not enough ground to, to build it on. We were asked at that time by leadership to, by the leadership I'm working with, to, to see if the school itself, if the building itself could accommodate the needs, the scope in which we, we have achieved, uh, through this planning process inside this facility reasonably to that. As you see in the, the multiple colors on the two, the upper floor and the lower floor, yes, it does accommodate what, what those scope needs would be. Now, some of the gray areas would also be used cafeteria, the gymnasium, uh, some of the, uh, area would, there would be an increase in the administrative area. That's already come to light in our previous little review yesterday. But overall, it, it separates who they, what they want separated. It gives the amount of area that, that they, uh, would desire. So, it, it could successfully occur. Yes, sir?
So, what you're saying is they want to keep the North Star School there plus the alternative school?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
No, no, dis- if you, if you, if you change the use of the building.
Right.
As solely an alternative school.
Oh, okay.
Right? Would that building work to achieve that alternative academy or alternative school within the existing facility with, without substantial or major additions or major renovations, which equates to, you know, major expense? And this study is not a, a extremely detailed of, of all the systems or any of that stuff. It is about simply how much area, what type of spaces are in Montford? And can that translate into a usable building for the alternative school? And the resounding answer from their study is yes, it can.
Approximately.
I think some of the confusion, I'm sorry, Chair Newman, I think some of the confusion with this is we know that there's some, Montford North Star is not going to exist in this space. And I'm wondering if to decrease that confusion on our part, if we can refer to this as the William Randolph School, which is its, its intended name, um, might be more helpful for us as we're thinking about that versus Montford North Star, which is.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And Robert, did the, I guess the, the school, sorry, Amanda, are you?
I'm, I'll finish.
Uh, did the school or whoever is facilitating this study, um, give a number of an expected quantity of students for the alternative school? Right, to, to answer your question that you posed eloquently, you'd have to know how many kids?
Yes, they gave very, actually, they gave specific uses, specific number of students for each use. So, you, the uses you see in the different colorations, yes, they've given a, um, they've given a current and forecasted. Yes, sir. I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Because it seems to me, I mean, there was a large middle school there and the alternative school, I'm just guessing, would be much smaller in terms of quantities of students. And therefore, maybe the space is too big or like there could be other uses that get brought, I don't know.
So, it, it feels that, so, so going into this process, I thought this was a very, was, was going to be a very small, um, with, with few students. It was actually kind of described to me that this is not going to be much. The reality is the scoping of it is it's a great deal more because it has a, it has a cross-section of different needs. And each of those have a capacity of students. And, and so, so, so what went from in my mind as, as just a small, few classroom facility became what you see here through, through the guidance of the, um, I think, or Ms. Kim Robinson, who's in charge of, of that program.
I think it's my understanding that they want to bring back for that middle school to high school model of the alternative learning, um, when it was, like when it was Randolph Learning Center back in, you know, the early two thousands, up until the last, probably ten years ago, when it, those children lost their school. Um, so that's my understanding is that would increase the numbers. And I do know that there's a growing need for this. I'm curious too, though, and I'm sorry to derail whoever I think I interrupted, they've got administration, um, twenty-three, almost twenty-four hundred total square feet. Is that just the school administration? Or maybe to dig in a little bit more of what was being asked, I mean, are, are they looking at potentially moving additional administrators over to that building?
Five more than, yes, yes, ma'am. The, the, your last statement is, is the answer to that, yes.
Thank you.
And as a matter of fact, that's why what I show here is not the full amount. And they also want administration on both levels. So, the way this sets up is the middle school and the high schoolers are separated in, in floors. And in between each of those, at points of access, uh, would be administrative personnel. So, it is a, it is a management process and a direct need process for where they would be in the facility, supporting the parts of the facility.
That makes perfect sense. I'm just glad to see that they're making good on promises that were broken years ago.
I'd, I'd also be interested in just hearing more about the number of, uh, students that are forecasted to be participating in, you know, if this, these plans go forward.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the different programs. Because, you know, it is a substantial building. I mean, when, um, you know, when the new Isaac Dixon School was constructed and the existing, the existing Isaac Dixon School had to be, uh, taken down, like the whole Isaac Dixon School moved into the Randolph Building for, I guess, two years, if I remember? And, um, and that was a pretty big elementary school.
It was.
So, I mean, there must have been three hundred and fifty or so.
Four hundred.
Maybe four hundred students there.
I was on the school board, yeah.
So, I guess that, my question too was like, I mean, a lot of ways this programming makes sense, but it, one of my questions was just like, is it sort of like a major underutilization of the facility? So, I'd just love to get more details on like, yeah, how many kids are going to be?
Yes, sir.
In the facility if these plans are built out?
Now, let, let me please tell you, this, um, we intend on a final presentation, one, I will certainly get the information, uh, that's been asked of me. But understand, too, that what I'm presenting is sort of the, the conceptual progress that we're making. There's a substantial amount of documentation that validates what these images are, that these, this team has come up with that has the data that you're, you're asking me for. Um, I just, I'm, I was trying to bring it to you and kind of just let you know, we've kind of gone through and this is where we're at. We will be concluding with a final presentation. It will be a lot more comprehensive and they will have a lot of the backup data for your review as well in advance of that meeting. But I will certainly provide your answers.
Okay, thank you.
Because, you know, that would be a good place if they had room to relocate the central office and let us tear that down and put affordable housing over it.
I hadn't studied that yet. But we can.
Be perfect. Yeah. Yeah, cuz, cuz when we had the alternative school there before, I was on the school board then, the building wasn't full. So, yeah, downstairs.
Yeah, and there were, I think IT was in there for a while. I know that they had partnered with LEAF.
Yeah, right. We had different, yeah.
Yeah, there were some different organizations.
Yeah.
To help build the building. Seems like it could, there's a lot of possibilities.
Yeah.
Right, I just wanted to show one more slide. I don't know if it's there.
Okay, well, um, Robert, are you done with the, are there, are there?
Well, I, just to let, I'm, I'm done with the presentation. Other than just letting you know, our next steps are to give you a, a final presentation, including cost estimates for all of the concepts, including backup appendices of all the di- data that developed the, the concepts there. Multiple concepts, when I'm showing these, these are the ones in which have risen to the top through, through the folks that are, are kind of, um, helping us go through the process.
Um, I want to go back to the, um, Hall Fletcher facilities for a sec. And my question here is, I mean, this is kind of an idea, you know, I've never served on the, uh, Early Childhood Education Committee, but just from hearing from folks who have, I feel like I've heard over the, over time, the idea of sort of a, a large facility where there's a kind of like a, you know, um, kind of a, maybe, you know, an economy of scales from, from having a, kind of a consolidated facility. So, this is sort of that, that's the idea here, right? And, and has, um, has this plan been reviewed by the Early Childhood Education Committee yet or sort of this the first place it's landing and then it will?
No, 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 no.
If we advance it, it would go on to other partner groups and subcommittees like that?
So, so it's been reviewed with the, the principal, Carrie Buchanan, Susannah Smith, uh, preschool director. And it's, uh, uh, been also looked at and, and worked with, uh, Dr. Furman.
Okay.
It has not looked at our EC committee yet. This is our first spot on the county side.
Okay.
If you recall, this project started when APS closed and we, we all raised our hand and said, how do we replace those facilities and that pre-K facility that closed? How do we replace that? So, if you go back to the Buncombe County's, um, guiding principles, it was around how do we replace pre-K? We also know we had the EMS study come at that time and we know we needed a West Asheville site. And then as we were looking at it, we said, oh, our West Asheville library is also small. Is that a possibility? That's why that was third on the list. But our priorities was replacing the pre-K slots that we were losing to the closure of APS and the EMS base to meet the need of our EMS study at the time. So, those were our two largest needs. When we met with the schools, they also came back into Barker's question, they really needed a space for their maintenance facility. And that location was something that they thought was right in the middle of their jurisdiction and they will love to see that as well. As we've gone into this, what you heard Robert talk about, this pre-K would be best served someplace, helps to have infrastructure, already has a playground, already has some other facilities. So, we pivoted from a pre-K at this location to our pre-K at Hall Fletcher, which gives us what we were looking for, that larger hub, almost was the word we were using back then, where we can have a mass, a large amount of, um, slots or classrooms for pre-K. That would be satisfied if the Hall Fletcher site was done. The county still gets its main goals was, would be still having an AS, EMS base. And Robert mentioned it could be a small EMS base or we have the space that it could be that regional EMS base in West Asheville. So, it really meets our needs if this moves forward. But we don't have costs today, so.
Capital cost and, um, and then if, let's just say this facility is built out, um, realize it hasn't been, you know, this is kind of early in the conversation, just kind of a building concept. So, the hub idea has been out there for a while. But at this point, there's not necessarily like a business plan for who exactly would operate this. Is this a city school's responsibility? Is this a Buncombe County responsibility? Is this a, some education partner, nonprofit? We just don't know. We just don't know any of the answers to that at this point.
We don't, actually.
Hasn't gone through that yet.
It hasn't gone through that, actually, I think Asheville City Schools would be very interested in that conversation as well, but we have not gone through that at this point. We were really looking to see, could it fit at APS? And then when Dr. Furman got at the table, she goes, well, none of the infrastructure is there. It really fits better with close to a school with the infrastructure already in place. So that's why you have all these different studies.
And so if we use sort of, you know, if this process keeps moving ahead, would it, I guess it would go to the Early Childhood Education Committee soon, to kind of talk more about this, right? Because it's, this would be a major facility, right? It would be, which, which could be great, but it would also be a major financial obligation for whoever is going to be operating it, right? So.
Right.
I mean, there was a time, not that long ago, where the city was, the city schools were saying, you know, we may need to get out of this space, because like, we are having real financial obligations, meaning our, you know, first grade to twelfth grade obligations, so we all know pre-K is important, but we can't necessarily do stuff outside of our core responsibilities. That's prob, maybe that's changed since those conversations, but I just, I'm just kind of flagging, like, do we really, it's on city schools' property, but we don't really know who would own and operate this at this time. It's just conceptual, very early conceptual idea.
Right.
Okay. All right. Where is the city schools' maintenance facility currently?
It's in disparate locations, but their primary location is on site in the gymnasium, currently.
At this current facility?
Yes, sir.
In the old gymnasium?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They have other, other support operations at other, at other schools. That was part of what this is about, is consolidate them into one location, along with the other areas that they're supporting.
And this would be like school bus maintenance as well? Or building maintenance?
It's not to the level that you would call a full maintenance shop. It is, it is, it is minor maintenance, and it is also a secure location for the buses.
You know, what's never made sense to me, and it didn't when I was on the school board, when you look at how small the city school system is, with only, what, ten buildings, or something like that? Where Buncombe County has forty-four buildings. When you go out to their maintenance shop, they have their own architect, it looks like Home Depot out there. But why wouldn't, for efficiency, we merge the two? To me, it makes no sense. I mean, it's, it's not fair to, as a taxpayer, I hate that. I mean, that's a waste of money. It doesn't make sense, you know, that's the one thing I have with our school systems. We've got to be more efficient. You know, public schools keep getting in their own way. But, that's my editorial comment, I think we really need to look at that, at consolidating them, it makes no sense.
I just, I'm going to give my editorial comment too. Because I just, you know, unfortunately, in my opinion, the, the highways being widened here, which is going to displace more people from their homes and change the land use over time in this area, in a, in a wrong direction. And I, I just don't know if this type of facility is going to kind of make that trend better, it just doesn't seem, A, it's next to the highway, you know, but B, it doesn't, doesn't seem like the highest and best use of that property. There's a lot of other things that could go along Haywood Road there, in my opinion.
Other than maintenance.
Other than a ma, you know, other than a maintenance facility that people probably visit a few ti, you know, a few days a week. Looking at a parking lot that's going to be empty most of the hours of every week of every year. It could be something else.
Is that your sense as well for EMS building, or do we need to look for other locations?
I guess where my head is that, with that, is like, within that study of the EMS base locations, you, you've looked at geographically where, you know, response times are, are most needed. And so, and, and it being connected to, if there are fare on a highway and an exit ramp, seems like a good idea in terms of getting to people, seems like a decent spot for that.
So with this one, is the que, the question, it sounds like it's more around the maintenance, but is everybody, like, okay with the EMS and the library in that location? Is it just the question around the maintenance building?
I guess just, to be clear, this is to replace the West Asheville? Yeah.
Yeah. And makes more sense.
Yeah, I, I think it's. Speaking, you know, speaking as a non-architect, I'd love to swap the location of the EMS and the library buildings to where the EMS is next to the highway and not the library, but anyway, yeah, I think it's, I think it's good.
Is that because of accessibility, is that why you did it that way? It's easier to get the vehicle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Really, with the DOT plans there, and trying to segregate what, allowing left out and left right, you know, the different things there, it, it made sense to have it before that pork chop concrete area is put in. So they could, they can turn out in either direction that way, and they can go straight across the overpass, they can turn down onto the freeway, or they can go the other direction. So that seemed like a pretty ideal spot, just for that reason. We also thought the library, having its two-story elevation, fronting that intersection, would be very attractive there, so.
At our next presentation, you'll see some concept images, that kind of give you sort of what that is. And it is very attractive.
And just, in term, again, just kind of thinking about process, let's just, let's just say this moves ahead. So this would go, this would go to the School Capital Fund Commission, right, to look at, they, building, building this new building, and so none of those conversations have started yet, again, this is just sort of, we're sort of at the front end of this, yeah, okay.
And when you say building the new building, are you talking about pre-K building, or are you talking about the maintenance?
Well, here, I was thinking about the, the new maintenance building. I guess if it's the pre-K building, then again, that would kind of beg this question of like, well, whose building is this? And who's going to own and operate it? If it's city schools, then yeah, I guess it would be the city schools asking for capital money to build it. If it's, if it's somebody else, it may not be that source of funding, or sort of TB determined. But the maintenance building definitely would be a city schools' capital request.
Has it been explored with the city schools, to Commissioner White's side's point, of looking at combining that? And you're working with Buncombe County? Before, because I'm just, I'm concerned with like, some of the feedback we're hearing, you know, to keep going down this path, if we've not explored those other options.
And I don't have an answer to whether they have explored that with them, but as you know, we are looking at a consolidation study, where all of this stuff would be discussed. And that answer would not be back until February or so. But that will be a part of the conversation at that time, facilities would be a part of that conversation.
These kind of things are being looked, are going to be looked at.
As part of that study.
These are all facilities that are redundant.
Correct.
There's an alternative school in the county, so these are all redundant facilities, right?
I do think the alternative school in the county, DeWannabeau in Swananoa, does not have space for Asheville City Schools. That's why they were using the Edging Center as a location.
Okay, what else? All right, thank you for the updates.
Thanks for your all's feedback.
All right. Next item is the open space bond funding set aside. And Joe Carter and Allison Danes are here to help us out.
Thank you, commissioners, I am the open space bond project manager, and I'm here with Allison Danes from Recreation Services. We're here to bring forward two county-led projects that are going to come forward for funding from the open space bond. Sorry. At the April second meeting, this commission expressed interest in setting aside bond funding for county-led projects. In response to that interest, staff has put together the following presentation to provide details on the scope, timing, and funding needs for two projects. These are the Ferry Road Open Space Project and the Deverview Mountain Project. This presentation will provide context for a request for board action that we will be bringing on the twenty-first to set aside bond funding for these projects. Thank you. All right. So first, I will talk about the bond and the status of it, in terms of the allocations that have already been made, as well as allocations that we anticipate. I'll also talk about the passive recreation application window, and what came out of that, before going into details on the two projects themselves. All right. We currently have three projects that have been approved by this commission to receive bond funding. These are the Woodfin Greenway, the Parham Fortner Conservation Easement, and the Lake Eden Conservation Easement. In total, these three projects are about one point six seven million dollars. We also have future known commitments coming down the pipeline, being the Anka Heritage Trail, as well as some additional conservation easements. These known commitments total about seven point two million dollars. Therefore, the total of known commitments for open space bonds so far is roughly eight point nine million dollars. Additionally, we just closed the application window for passive recreation lands at the end of March. We received a total of eleven completed applications, totaling roughly ten point nine million dollars in funding requests. The applications have just gone through the scoring process, and are now getting ready to go before the Passive Recreation Lands Subcommittee. They will begin their review later this month, so we would like to move forward with these allocations before that review begins, such that the Subcommittee understands how much funding is available. And then the Subcommittee's recommendations will be coming back before this commission in August for your review and vote. All right, the first project on our list is the Ferry Road Open Space Project. You heard a little bit about this earlier in the briefing, but this project combines housing, including both affordable and market rate, community services, conservation, and open space. The latter two, the conservation and the outdoor recreation components, are what we are calling the Ferry Road Open Space Project. This project includes over seventy acres of conserved land. That includes both wooded lands, a wetland, and several thousand linear feet of tributaries into the French Broad River. The outdoor recreation component will include the development of both one point nine greenway miles and one point seven miles of natural surface trails. And those trails will be accessible to the public by three trailheads and roughly twenty estimated parking spaces. This project aligns really closely with the goals of the open space bond. First and foremost, we want to protect natural resources. As I mentioned, this conserves a pretty considerable plot of land, which will also protect and improve water quality, as well as natural habitats. Additionally, we want to provide outdoor recreational opportunities. Not only does this project include that greenway and trail component, but it will also enhance access to the Bent Creek River Park, as well as the Bent Creek Experimental Forest. And there's possible connectivity in the future with the French Broad River. And then finally, a third goal of this bond is to enhance equity and accessibility in the conservation and outdoor recreation spaces. As mentioned before, this project meets that goal by co-locating affordable housing with these high-quality outdoor amenities, which is a pretty unique aspect of this project. The total scope for this project includes the design and construction of that greenway and trail system, the parking, the, a boardwalk in that wetland that I mentioned, as well as some educational amenities and the permitting for the open space pieces. The total cost for this scope is seven million dollars. We recently received lift funding from the TDA last month, totaling four million dollars, which means we have a gap of three million dollars. And that gap of three million dollars is what we are requesting from the open space bond for this project. And with that, I will pass it to Allison to discuss Deverview Mountain.
Good to see you all again, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you. Let me see if I can figure this out. There we go. All right. So we have already been engaged with community members, including members of the Deverview community specifically, as well as stakeholders, as well as having come to you all in the previous months to obtain permission to be the primary on the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Program, the grant, ORLUP grant that we had talked about. And from this community outreach and from those conversations, we've come up with the following three objectives here for this project. Again, just as a reminder, it's approximately three hundred and forty-five acres of property. And our first primary objective that we believe that we can advance through this project is equity, creating access to outdoor passive recreation opportunities for disadvantaged and underserved communities. And that is very much in alignment with the ORLUP grant that we have applied for. And we'll be looking to hear from, in November, if we've been asked to move forward with an official application. Our second primary objective is to ensure safety and accessibility both to and within the park. And then third, conservation. We're looking at conservation of natural landscapes and scenic viewpoints while educating the community about this important resource. So these are the, the three primary objectives that we're looking at. Obviously, very much open to consideration for other potential objectives that, that you may see for this project in the coming future. Moving forward, not only do these projects align with bond goals, but, but it also aligns with our strategic twenty forty-three plan, as well as our strategic business plan. And again, we have the protection of natural resources, protects three hundred and thirty-seven acres of forested land and six point five acres of scenic viewships, as well as protecting sixteen headwater streams within the property and native forests and wildlife habitats. Also, looking to provide recreational opportunities through hiking types passive recreation, as I said earlier, which includes hiking, scenic overlooks, outdoor gathering and such. And then also the opportunity to provide environmental education programming and outdoor experiences for our local community. Third, looking to enhance equity and accessibility. This property is located one and a half miles from Asheville Housing Authority Public Housing, the Deverview location, and provides park access to communities with low to moderate income. I wanted to pull up a site map here. I believe most, if not all of you, at one point have been able to access this property. You'll see the entry location on the lower right-hand side here. Currently, this location is completely gravel lot, which could hold approximately six cars at the moment. So from the point of entry to the proposed parking area that we are looking and exploring to have is about a half a mile from that point of entry. And that road is currently all gravel, without any type of guardrail or safety. That gravel road was originally built and intended for private use, not necessarily for two-way use in that area. And then, from the area that we'll be talking about, from the proposed parking area up to the peak view shed there, is approximately a quarter of a mile. And so, in total, from entry location all the way to that beautiful peak view that we're really wanting folks to be able to access, is approximately a little over three-quarters of a mile, it's about point eight miles. And we'll be having conversation, really, in key to that entry location site, as far as ensuring that we are not adversely affecting our neighbors or that neighborhood. So with that, we will be looking at the requirements for the development. We've had conversation about looking into due diligence. So here shows the different types of due diligence and development that is required for each location. As I talked about, the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership Program. Land and Water Fund was also leveraged, the Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy gained a little over four million dollars to go towards the acquisition of this piece of property. And then we'll look at due diligence, safety, and then community input. And so here, you'll see where environmental assessments are required for both the ORLUP grant and the Land and Water Fund, as well as just due diligence and safety of the property. Initial appraisals also are required. I do want to point out that ORLUP requires two yellow book appraisals. I do want to point out that ORLUP requires two yellow book appraisals, which is different than the type of appraisal that is required for Land and Water Fund. Site surveys are also required, as well as preliminary design, which is a requirement of the ORLUP grant that we're going for, as well as due diligence and safety of the property. And then construction documentation that we'll talk about later is really a part of the due diligence of safety for the property and folks that'll be entering that property. And then we've got permitting across the board. Obviously, we need to ensure that we're abiding by whatever permitting requirements. Then looking into Phase One construction, at which point the property becomes open to the public is a requirement of ORLUP. That's a three-year period of time from the point of an award to opening the park. And then required due diligence and looking at community input for what they would like to see for that park entry. And then we would have conversation about potential phases in the future for development, due diligence, and what other possibilities could be made on this piece of property. So I've got a picture here of a timeline somewhere. There it is. I want to point out a few things here. So you'll see in red here, there are different stages, Stage One, Two, and Three. And then the other main points I want to bring out are those yellow stars that you see. So we'll talk a lot more in depth at the next slide about the exact stages. But I do want to point out that these are some of the bigger milestones to be aware of here in red. And it is in the November of this year that we will find out if we are invited to apply for that ORLUP grant. Again, we're feeling very positive about that at this point. And we would go straight into Stage One, acquisition requirements for those due diligence. And then Stage Two would be advanced planning and design. And you'll notice here that star that I'm talking about. So there's three distinct areas where there are stars here. And those delineate areas of decision-making where we will go out to community to ask for input. And then we'll be coming back to you all to get your input, as well as to have decision points. So along the way, we'll be ensuring that we're reaching out to the public, as well as coming back to you at these key times. And that first key time would be in July of 2025, if we were to advance moving forward with that ORLUP grant, to talk about advanced planning and design. That next, obviously, we move into the application. Currently, ORLUP award would be announced in February of 2026. And then right now, anticipated that the Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy would close on that property in March of 2026, at which point in April, we would go into design permitting and construction. Again, we would have a touch point here with you all to discuss what it is that you'd like to see, as well as engage the community for what it would take to open that piece of property. Then in January, we would have another community outreach specific plan. We already are working with our CAPE team to engage this community, as I previously said. So we'd be sure that along the way, those touch points, as we are starting to do design, that we would continue that process. And then we would go into the permitting and design in April. Again, there's that touch point. And then January would be that other large in January of 2027. And we anticipate that it would take about two and a half years in order to actually bring that piece of property online for the community to be able to utilize. And so that would be March of 2029. So to further discuss those stages here, that first stage that I talked about is the acquisition requirements. And those are initial environmental assessment appraisals. It's approximately $175,000 for those. It'll take about five to six months in order to obtain those preliminary assessments. We'd go into advanced preliminary and design, which could be anywhere from 10 to 12 months. That would include site surveys, preliminary planning and design. And we're estimating that at about $210,000. And then moving forward, we would come back and look to complete design and permitting, which would be approximately $1.08 million. And really, what would be included in those would be those safety procurements of what we would need to have in order for this property to be securely accessed by the community. Again, looking at equitable access. And we'll have a conversation here on this initial construction costs and what that looks like to us as far as looking at equitable access and safety for the community would be to put in a paved two-lane road. We are also proposing a multi-usey path potentially that could be there, an asphalt-paved parking lot, vehicular guardrails for safety, an entry gate, the stormwater controls, and then vaulted toilets that would be required. And that cost range is anywhere from $4.5 to $6.2 million. And those would be the decisions points that we would be coming back to you all to discuss where we were at currently. As I said, that road is really not a two-way road and based on the location of where this park would be so close, which is one of the reasons that it's such an attractive piece of property to this community, the really feel that it's essential that we have at the minimum a paved road in order to access that piece of property and not to adversely affect the local community, but also to be able to have people be able to get into that piece of property and enjoy the trails and potential recreation there. So I'll pause for a minute of questions. And if there are none immediately, then I'll turn it over to Jill.
I think I just have one question about this list of things. This is, just so I understand, all these are required? Are they nice to have? Is there something in between? Are they?
Right. So, so these are, so we are saying, what we are saying is based on equity and the objectives of our project, that these would be things that we would consider to be required. As far as truly being able to get onto the property, the only requirements for ORLUP is that the community is able to access the property. So as far as needing vaulted toilets, that would be a good one. You all have been out there. To me, it's a requirement, but we may deem that it doesn't need to be. And so I think you would need to really decide, moving forward, how accessible and what type of a park you're trying to create for a community. With that, I'll turn it over to Jill.
I have a, I'm sorry, is there more presentation to go?
Just a couple wrapping up slides.
Okay, go ahead. Sure.
So in total, across those two projects, both D-Review Mountain and Ferry Road, we're requesting allocations of $10.7 million from the open space bond at that May 21st meeting. Combined with the currently approved commitments at $1.7 million and the anticipated commitments at $7.2 million, that brings our total commitments from the bond to $19.6 million out of a total of $30 million, which leaves us with a remaining funds of $10.4 million across those passive recreation land proposals, as well as any future conservation easement and greenway projects. And then finally, again, just as a next step, we will be coming back at the May 21st meeting, pending any feedback or questions you all have today.
Okay, thank you. All right. Commissioners, questions?
One question. So on the, okay, looking at the total funding there. With the greenways, I just wanted to make sure, because I know we had talked about the commitment to do the greenways. And it's saying that the Woodfin Greenway was 1.27, and then we're holding $2 million for the ANCA. I was thinking that I had another number in mind for those greenways. Is that?
Those numbers are certainly estimated costs. As we move forward, both with Woodfin and ANCA, those costs may go up. We are committed to completing those two projects with bond funds before we fund additional greenway projects other than the Ferry Road Greenway. That would be part of this project here. And then additionally, there are some projects in the passive recreation application window that include greenway components in them. So the total greenway funding, depending on how that shakes out, could be significantly higher.
Yeah, I was just wanting to make sure that we are taking that into account with these funds, those projects. Because I was thinking it was a little bit more we were holding for those projects. And then the, and then with the, also with that, with the conservation easement, I just wanted to, we don't need to do it right now, but I was thinking that number was a little bit higher there that we were holding for those as well. So I just, we can look at that and just make sure before it comes before us that we've got those numbers on the greenway and the conservation tightened up there.
And I will say that $5.2 million, I believe it is, that is coming down the pipeline for conservation easements. Those are solely conservation easements. A number of the passive recreation projects, including both Ferry Road and D-Review, will also have conservation easements on those sites or other deed restrictions to prevent any development.
That's a great point. Thank you. On the Ferry Road one, I just had one question. And that looks, it looks good. And I certainly think it's a wonderful project for us to be using some of these funds for. I was thinking that the last, the last time that the Ferry Road project was presented to us, I was thinking it was a total of $6 million instead of the $7 million. And I was just wondering, was there something that we added to this? Or did just the process change?
I'll invite Tim to add to this. But I do know that wetland component of the Ferry Road total is the one that's a little more nebulous, just based on environmental assessments that we need to do. We may or may not be able to do a certain level of development on that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a, I'm just looking back through the presentation real quick. Is there, the schedule on the D-Review is very detailed. Is there, just looking through, is there a schedule on the Ferry Road project, build-out of those recreational assets?
I'll defer to Tim again on Ferry Road. I do believe that once the funding is approved, we can go, so let, put out an RFP in 90 days. Yes. So once we get the RFP out, the timeline for the actual development will largely depend on the proposals we receive.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds great. Can we look at the timeline on the, go to the timeline on the D-Review project? That's slide 16, I guess. And maybe just talk a little bit more about that, you know? So if we approve, you know, if we say, yes, let's approve this, let's go do this. I guess, to be clear, like if these estimates all turn out to be, you know, totally dialed in, then what we, what we expect we will get out of the approval of these funds, we're gonna get a two-lane road built up to the trail, to the parking lot site. And that road will be paved, right? And that's gonna include the associated grading and things like that to make that, you know, viable. Then we're gonna pave the parking lot up there, put in guardrails where needed, stormwater, and some toilets up at the parking lot site. Is that right? And then we will also have, and that'll all get, those will all get built. And then, but then we will also get a bunch of planning documents around kind of the future vision for the park, you know, things that could be. But then the build-out of those items, other than the ones we've just listed, that'll be some future costs to be looked at, and the plan will explore all that. So I'm just kind of making sure I'm understanding the scope of what we get out of these funds. And that's what we cover.
Yep, 100, yep, you're 100% accurate.
Okay. And on the question of the, hm? And some surveys and environmental assessments and things like that.
All those documents required to close on the acquisition of the land as well, which is over a million, and the preliminary due diligence.
Do, do, do we know how many parking lots? How many parking spaces we are envisioned? At least at this point, going into that location that's identified? Like how many you think would fit on that, on that site?
We could fit a maximum of 50 parking spaces at that location.
And on the question of paving the road or not paving the road. So when I've been up there, that's kind of a question that, you know, I'm not an engineer, but that's kind of definitely one of the questions that comes into my mind. It's like, do you need to pave this or is it kind of okay, you know? There's a lot of benefits to paving it, of course. Like in the long, long run, it might be even cheaper than having to, you know, maintain a gravel road, but it is expensive upfront. Have, have, have we had an engineer look at that specific question right now? Or at this point, is kind of the thoughts that like, yes, we do need to pave it and grade it? I don't know, just to what degree of like engineering thought has been put into that specific question at this time?
So at this point, it's been internal that we've worked with two of our project managers, one within the Parks Department and one within General Services, to have conversations about what would be required in the safest, most accessible way in order to enter that property. And so that's been the assumption that we've been operating under. Once we have designated funds, we could certainly look towards having a conversation with an engineer once we pay for someone to come out there and look at the potential opportunities for, for paving versus unpaving and what would be the benefits and, and the adversities of either. So we could do that upon that engineering. And that would be one of those checkpoints that we could come back with you all.
Yep. And so just maybe kind of layperson sort of simple way of thinking about it is the concern that like, it's just, you know, it's pretty steep, right? So is the concern is just like, you know, a lot of just people, if this parking lot's up here, you've got to, people have got to get to this parking lot. That, you know, maybe a lot of people's regular vehicles just, it won't work or would be kind of considered a little scary as it, as it is. I mean, even if you kind of like, whatever, realigned it or something, that just having a gravel. I mean, just thinking about like a lot of our roads and like, you know, national forests and stuff like that, that people drive out to all the time and love. You know, a lot of those are, of course, gravel roads. But is it just like the slope of this site that makes, makes this internal thinking that like, you know, it needs to be paved?
I do think that that's one of the considerations. I think the other consideration is the proximity of the park. So some of the places that you just talked about are much farther out and not as easily accessible, whereas we're bringing this park right into a neighborhood. And so it's gonna have a great deal of accessibility for people to be able to get there. And so I would say that that's been another consideration. And, and safety is of the utmost importance. And so we would at the very minimum, for sure, need to ensure that we had some type of guardrails or such. And again, I am not an engineer. So to your point, those would be the questions that we would be asking and looking for guidance from an engineer.
You know, just that, that all makes sense. I mean, just one, just, you know, thought I would just share on this that I'm, you know, sure once you get the engineers and stuff, they'll, they'll look at all this. But, you know, obviously, like, if we do do a paved road there, grading and stuff necessary to align that, you know, the idea of like, it's always great to like, put a bike lane somewhere, right? Or some kind of thing like that. I mean, I do just, one of the concerns about this, it's such a beautiful property. In terms of this access to the property, like it is such a, it is a really steep slope, right? So just thinking about this, one of the concerns is like, how much do you have to like, grade that mountainside, right? To like, if you have like a wide footprint kind of road going into it? So it'll just be one of those areas where like, having as much infrastructure as possible is desirable. But I think there will be a lot of trade-offs there in terms of like, how wide do you want to make that road footprint versus the associate cost and environmental impact to the site from, from doing this? Anyway, just share that, having been out there. My other question is about, like, I support all this. I think this is a great use of bond funds to get all this going. I guess, one question is, under this schedule, the design, I guess I'm a little unclear about, there's, there's, there's planning and design work happening according to the schedule, like, pretty quickly in 2025. And then there's other design and permitting happening that starts out in 2026. So what, what's the planning and design work that starts pretty promptly? Is it these issues that we're talking about right now? Or just talk us through that?
Yes, it would be exactly what you're talking about. That would be the initial engineers coming out and having conversation about what would our options be? The pros and cons of each of, each of those options, the costs associated with those options. And then once we narrow down a path forward, then we would have our, whoever we had brought in to do construction, we would have that, that engineer move forward with an actual plan. And that's, it's at that point that you need those design contracts that, that have the exact specifications that really go past the initial design, which has a lot to do with environmental, as well as looking at soils and such. And so now you get more. And so now you get more into the, the deeper dive of slope as to what you're talking about and what those grades would be. So it is a progression of design as we make decisions about how we would like to move forward with what that road looks like.
Okay. And I guess just, I guess the other question I've got on this is that, I mean, if, in terms of this initial scope of work, the, you know, engineering and paving the road, paving the parking lot, building the toilets, I mean, is there any possibility that, that those aspects might, you know, because this, this envisions the park opening in 2029, right, like five years from now? I mean, is there no pathway that it could, like, just those pieces could be accomplished on a, you know, more compressed schedule?
We, we could look at it. The, the, the planning and design takes quite a bit of time. It kind of goes back to the, if you, if I go back, actually, if I go back to, if I go back to this.
Allison is going back. One of the things that we need to also bear in mind is ownership of the site. So yes, the compress cycle, she's looking at that, but we don't own it, or Southern Appalachians doesn't own it till 2026.
So we can't start doing site work until then? But this planning work can happen now, right? Or as soon as we prove the funds? We can't go build something on land we don't own, but, right?
Correct. But to, and to your point, I think that the due diligence, the due diligence costs go to that. So acquisition requirements, it's going to take a minimum of five months in order to get our initial environmental assessment and appraisals. And then you move into your advanced, advanced planning and preliminary design. And those are the true site work, preliminary planning and design. And that can take 10 months to 12 months. And those can start to happen. They, they don't have to happen one complete and then another. There can be some overlay, but you have to have the completion of at least some initial environmental assessments before you can move forward with certain preliminary design. And so you don't need to wait completely for one to go to another. And then complete design work and permitting, because that's the other, that's the advanced stage that you're talking. And so it's at that point, once we've decided what design we want to go with, that you're also starting to get your permitting in order to be able to, to grade that road appropriately, ensure we're following all of those permitting requirements. And depending on the route that we go with that entryway, that could take a year to two years.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. I mean, all right. Any other questions? I mean, we, just pave, pave them, pave them, okay. All right. Thanks. Well, this is a great use of the bond fund, so it's exciting to see these plans move forward. And thanks for the presentations. Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time. I'll be really quick, since this is a quarterly report that's mandatory. I'll make it move fast here. So this is a community development block grant for neighborhood revitalization from the Department of Commerce. And up to date, we have gone through selecting the subrecipient, and we have executed the contract with them, and that is with Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity. We had submitted an extension request to them for time because Habitat, excuse me, had indicated that they would be able to, within a one-year extension, actually increase the number of homes repaired, adding another 20, and utilizing another $100,000 of the funding. And just last week, we received the approval notice that we had received that. So the last piece that we've put in place was completing the selection committee bylaws. And so the next step will be actually convening that committee and selecting the home repair sites. This will be through Habitat's submission of applications as they were chronologically received. And then the selection committee will be responsible for review of the application materials, confirmation of verification of eligibility, and ultimately, the selection of households to receive home repair funding on a first-come, first-served basis. Any questions? Happy to answer any. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
A few minutes left.
All right, great job. All right, Commissioners, that's everything that's on the agenda. Let's take a brief break, and we'll reconvene for our regular meeting.